Two, that you want to retain single family character of Notaway County, but you also want to promote single family development in areas designated for residential use. Well, your zoning ordinance has designated five acres in A1 as suitable for single family residential use. So as far as complying with the requirement that you not be in violation of the comprehensive plan to grant the exception, we comply. All right, the next one for the exception is the zoning. And like I indicated, now the zoning is A1, which allows for by right for single family residences greater than five acres. The problem with the zoning ordinance is as we evaluate this, is that it requires the 200 feet of road frontage. We can't do that, could never do that. But we have the ability provided 50 foot right of access that services all of these parcels that will be maintained by homeowners association, that'll be paid for by the developer, that'll be paid for by the owners after development. It doesn't require any imposition of fees on the county. So we have complied with the zoning ordinance to the extent that we can. The next thing is, you know, anything that would be contrary to a separate authority. Separate authority would be, you know, Department of Health, or Department of Health with, you know, lots and lot size and things like that. We're totally prepared to comply with everything that is out there. The issue is, and this comes down to the hardship component versus the unusual component to the exception language. The hardship component is that it's going to cost to build a private paved road to public standards, to be accepted into the secondary system, which would require ditches and require drainage. Uh, it would cost, it's literally about $450 a linear foot to do that. And we have roughly a little bit right around a mile. So you're talking about $2 million to build a private road for 22 houses that doesn't go anywhere else other than the Lee Lake, and it doesn't have any use to service the county. So that's why we think it's a hardship, because its land is not worth that altogether. So if you guys wanted to, for example, if, if somebody on this board owned 500 acres in Notaway County, and they wanted to cut three lots out of it, and they wanted those lots to be at the back of that property, under your ordinance right now, they'd have to build a private paved road to those three lots, according to VDOT secondary road standards. That would essentially prevent you from doing anything with your land, because you just couldn't do it, it wouldn't be affordable. So the only process we have essentially is to come to you all and to ask for an exception to that requirement. It's not as if, you know, we're asking to change anything for right now. We're asking you to work within your, uh, your legislation to basically get an exception that would allow us to do this. And the exception would essentially, one, it would create 22 lots. It would promote growth in the county. It would promote growth with five acre lots, not lots dumped on top of one another, not townhouses dumped on top of one another, not mobile homes, good quality, single family homes. That is a growth benefit to the county that the county should relish. So it's a, you know, it will take a little bit of work. Uh, for example, uh, we understand that we have to comply with the site distance rules for VDOT. They already do comply, and we're prepared to build everything that VDOT says that we should build. So there is not one thing in here that impacts what we would do that is otherwise inconsistent with your subdivision ordinance other than this requirement for a public road in a private subdivision of 22 lots or less. Um, and I would say, we have indicated to Mr. Zodi in our application that they are the only options that, they are the only requirements that we're looking to gain exception from, from the county, the options with respect to the road, because everything else we can comply with. If there's an issue about lot irregularity, all you gotta do is look at this aerial. If you look at this aerial and you look right across from the road that says Fishing Road, you'll see some lots there that are totally irregular. I mean, one of them, they look like chicken wings or, you know, something else. I mean, so, I mean, those lots are irregular because they had to get the road frontage on the front, but they probably come down to as little as 20 feet in the bend before they go to Lee Lake. And that was designed to be, to create exposure on Lee Lake, but have road frontage required by the county. So I can't think of a more irregular lot than those, but they've been passed. So our irregular lots, the irregularity, if there is any, is based only on the shoreline of Lee Lake. That's what makes them different. But if you look at the actual plat, you'll see that the lots are pretty rectangular. You know, they're, they're pretty even. They don't have any dog legs, chicken wings, whatever else you want. I mean, they're just regular lots serviced by a standard road. You know, these road requirements may have to be adjusted a bit to create curves, because Mr. Zodi wanted curves. We could do that. You know, we can have cul-de-sacs placed at the end, we could do that. You know, if there is a lot on here that doesn't perk, we'll remove it. If there's a lot on here that doesn't have drainage or stormwater capability, we remove it. But before we do all that and spend all that money, we at least need to know that the exception is a possibility from this commission, so we can move forward with that cost. So having said that, uh, thank you for your time. I'll take any questions that you've got. Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
A couple of questions. Uh, in the documents that we received when we were filing.
Yes, ma'am.
You indicated that part, your estimated cost is $1.2 million. And now you're saying it's two.
It's lower, that was lower than the actual cost.
So how did you align up that dollar figure? Because you're saying essentially we're asked putting you in a situation of hardship.
I'll tell you, uh, George Emerson, uh, is one of the biggest developers in Chesterfield, has been for years. Uh, his primary lead architect and designer is a guy named John Barksdale, also top shelf, top quality. Um, I spoke to him personally to figure out what this is, because in the old days, it was per mile. Now the reference is to per linear foot. All right, so when you come up with a per linear foot for paving, per linear foot for paving in the city, uh, with water and sewer is over $500 a linear foot. In this jurisdiction with this area, depending on the amount of cul-de-sacs that's needed, depending on the amount of dirt you have to bring in, $350 a linear foot is the right number right now. So if I figure that out, just based on the math, at about roughly 1,000 or 5,000 feet, which is right at a mile total, that gets you above $2 million. So, you know, we didn't pull it out of the blue, and that number in the, in the, uh, application was actually conservative. On the other hand, a private road may cost us $350,000. So it's not cheap, but it's not $2 million.
Uh, the other question that I have is.
Yes, ma'am.
According to the documents, you, you currently have two homeowners that are on the property now, or they're, they just own the property, or the houses have been built?
No, 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 they're on a, a different subdivision plat.
Okay.
Or they're directly on Green Hill Road.
All right.
All right, so we don't need to get into everything that happened with that, but those are four lots that are, are right on Green Hill Road, and they do have road frontage of 200 feet on Green Hill Road. So the issue is not the ones on the Green Hill Road, the issue is all the land behind it.
Okay, so do you currently have a, a road maintenance agreement?
No, we don't have lots yet.
Lots yet?
Yeah.
Okay, do you, is it HOA?
We don't have lots to sell to create an HOA. Yes, ma'am. But, but I think in the, in that report, I think I indicated that we would create an HOA. So we're going to create an HOA, we're going to give the, the city all the easements they need to access the properties back there for service purposes, fire, water, sewer, whatever, not sewer, but fire, water, um, you know, emergency services, we're going to do all that. And so it will be effectively, just like any other subdivision, it just won't have a paved road that fronts it, so everybody has a mailbox on a paved road. Thank you.
Will they be able to have a mailbox on this private road, or the mailbox would be out on Green Hill Road?
It'll be on the private road. Yeah, there, there, there are lots. Once these lots, if they're approved and adopted into the county system as lots, they'll have their own physical mailing address.
You had mentioned that you'd be willing to up the specs of this private road, put in cul-de-sacs and anything else curves that require, but a lot of these lots have to go right at five acres. Do you have zero room to spare?
We may have to, we have to cut out one. I mean, the cul-de-sacs are going to be obviously at the end of the 14 lot tract. I mean, that makes logical sense, and that would be a good place for a bus turnaround. So if we have to eliminate one of those lots, then we'll do what's necessary to do that. Purpose being is that we want to make sure that buses can come in there. We don't have, you know, 22 homes full of kids on Green Hill Road waiting at a, you know, a place for a bus stop. So, I mean, we'll accommodate that. Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, I'm an open public here now for public comments. Uh, if you would just come up to the podium and state your name and, uh,
My name is Gary Owen. If you look on your plat of the property that Mr. Morissette proposes to, uh, cut into lots, you'll see that I'm on the upper part north of his subdivision, proposed subdivision, excuse me. My concerns are two. I have an access road that goes through one of his lots. I was told that he might need to move my access road that I've used for seven years somewhere else that would be better than where I'm at. How do you figure it's better than where I'm at if I'm happy with what I have? Just because one lot is not convenient for him? Because my access goes through that lot. The second thing I would like to make a point of is I've talked to Mr. Morissette, person to person, and I would like to apologize to Mr. Morissette, because my wife called him first and got very irritated. But anyway, what it all boils down to is a second thing. And that second thing is, if you can't find a perk site on a particular piece of property, and you ask your neighbor nicely, if he'll give you 60 or 70 feet of his property to put a, a septic system on, what would you do? Would you give him that? He's not offering to give me any money for it. He's also asking me to move my driveway, my access. And you can't move an access, I understand, I'm, I'm getting a little bit irritated. I understand that you cannot alter an access and leave a property landlocked. And if he moves his access where he wants it, then I'm responsible for his fees that he says the roads cost. See what I'm saying? I'm then a part of his subdivision. I never want a part of this subdivision, okay, never. The second thing is, I would ask you to use a little stewardship here. Look at how many lots that you see on the lake. There are 10 total lots on this lake. On the other side, I'd like to know how many lots are actually on the lake from this subdivision that's five acres, and how many lots are actually on the lake there? I didn't get a copy of that. I don't know. I doubt that the average person doesn't know. But I know that the environmental impact of putting 10 five acre lots on that lake with any kind of house or anything like that is going to do a detrimental damage to your lake. You have the stewardship of that lake, the gaming and fisheries have the stewardship of that lake. I would ask both of you to use a little common sense here. And I, I have an alternate to, to, to do to this. Maybe the lake's access lots that are now five acres should be expanded to include not five, but 10 acres. That way you wouldn't have so many lots packed with houses and drainage on a lake that is pristine. And let's face it, if you've ever been to the lake, it's pristine. Use a little stewardship here, that's all I'm asking. Thank you very much.
I'd like to address some of his concerns, if that would be okay. Uh, I don't know what rules you're going by, but I don't, you know, if that needs to be done, feel free to call on me.
Good evening, everyone. My name's TJ Oliver. If you look down at there, you will see that I own tax map number 3347E, which is one of the lands that is on Green Hill Road right now. It's one of the two houses. Both subdivided illegally by Mr. Clessy Morissette and built by Rock River Homes. So right now, I'm going to go through a speech so that I kind of keep things in order and don't lose my mind a little bit. In doing so, I'm going to ask Mr. Zodi for some help, because I brought some stuff for you guys. I might not have printed out enough, and I do apologize for such.
Is this the first one?
Yep, yes, the first one. Let's see here. So I can either give all you guys these all right now, and we can go through them as I speak, or I can give them to you as I speak, and they reference whichever one works. Let's do it that way, so we'll start with just this one.
I'll hang over here with it.
All right. According to county subdivision ordinance, section 2104 exceptions, the planning commission may, not has to, may, grant such an exception upon evidence presented by the applicant that an exception is warranted due to an unusual situation or the strict adherence to the requirements which result in substantial injustice or hardship. Direct quote. Within regards to unusual situations, there is nothing unusual about having to grade and pave a road, especially when you're developing a land for a subdivision. As a matter of fact, the county's current subdivision ordinance states, in accordance with regulations as far as grading and paving a road, the only requirement for what Mr. Morissette is requesting in section 5112 is that it be built in accordance with regulations established by the State Department of Highways and Transportation. This is in the county requesting this, this is the state. They're saying this is how we want things built in the state of Virginia, and all we're asking you to do is follow the state laws. So what is unusual about something that's required across the entire state of Virginia? If you ask me, nothing. This is something that every single land developer in this state has to do, if it is the State Department of Highway and Transportation that's requiring what we ask for in our ordinance. So unusual, if you ask me, it's out the door. An injustice is something that is considered to be unfair. Is it unfair? I'm going to say something right now. I'm going to have to reference Mrs. Morissette on this as well, but that is only because she is legally involved in all of this on the land ownerships and the plat deeds. Is unfair, is it unfair to ask Mr. and Mrs. Morissette to follow the Notaway County subdivision ordinance, which is also the state's regulations for land that they plan to develop and then sell to Rock River Homes, who will in turn sell these homes to future Notaway County citizens? Is it unfair to ask the Morissettes to develop land that they wish to turn into a subdivision of 22 homes in a manner which will provide the utmost quality to these future homeowners should this land be allowed to be legally subdivided into all these lots? That still has not been done. After all this, excuse me. After all, these future homes will be for future citizens who we as a county should be thinking of, and what is best for not only their well-being, but what is best for the county's culture, and which we wish to bestow upon these potential future citizens. The last exception deals with hardship. If Mr. and Mrs. Morissette are going to experience any hardships within regards to developing this land to not only Notaway County subdivision ordinance, but also the state of Virginia's ordinances, then this will be due to the development of a poor business plan that will not result in profitable gain. Furthermore, the Morissettes have had more than ample opportunity to sell this land on multiple occasions to multiple people over the years. As a matter of fact, there are right now currently two couples that are willing to buy these plats of land, not at five acres, but the way they originally were set up. And Mr. Morissette, from what I understand, told them he can't sell that land to them until he gets all these legal issues taken care of. Well, if he needs to get all the legal issues taken care of, why is he up here asking you folks to approve all this stuff and build 22 lots? As you can see, should the Morissettes obtain or experience any hardships while attempting to develop this land, it'll be due to their failure to conduct and plan out a proper business analysis that would ensure profitable gain, not because of the county subdivision ordinance. I would also like to add that the Morissettes are not county citizens that are coming before you today asking to build a shed, a barn, a garage, or any other structure, and coming up to you with their neighbor that would be affected and say, you know what? County code says 15 feet. I need a little wiggle room here, can you give me an exception and make it 13 feet? That's simple stuff that we ask for exceptions for. We bring in, those are rare circumstances, both property owners are in agreement. You know, we can take care of that. It's nothing that causes any type of significant harm, and both property owners are in agreement. Also too, you're not talking about somebody that's coming before you and saying, hey, you know what? I own 100 acres, and I would like to activate this family subdivision exception that we've got in this ordinance. However, one of the people that I want to add to it is, um, my daughter-in-law's parents, because her father passed away and her mother wants to come live on this. Well, according to your ordinance, that person is not considered a family member of that property owner. So they're asking for that, so they would be then asking for an exception to add someone within the same guidelines that to them is family, but according to the paper, you know, it isn't. They're not a direct blood relative. These are things that you ask for exceptions for. These are things we consider. Give me a second. Instead of coming before everybody like everybody should have to begin with, Mr. and Mrs. Morissette are individuals that are developing land that Mr. Morissette purchased in his own name 16 years ago. And Mr. Morissette purchased this land in 2008. And since then, Mr. and Mrs. Morissette have violated our county subdivision ordinance and state laws on multiple occasions involving this land, and still to this day, they're in current violation of both the county ordinance and state laws. The paper that I handed to all of y'all. Everything that is highlighted in yellow, I tried to label it the best that I could, that is everything that the Morissettes are currently in violation of regarding state law. The blue is where the clerk of court violated state law. And I want to remind everybody here that the clerk of court is not a representative of the county. Clerk of court answers to the state. In regards to Mr. Morissette's request for an exception to section 5103, lots to a butt street, this goes back, sorry, I got ahead of myself, I apologize. So getting back to this, goes back to the same two things. The only reason the exception is being requested is once again due to a poor business and development plan of the Morissettes. If they have not been able to figure out how to legally, without exceptions, be able to subdivide and develop this land in the 16 years they have owned it, then they need to either go back to the drawing board or accept one of the multiple alternative routes that have been presented to them over the years. Not ask Notaway County's planning commission to bail them out. We're not the federal government, they're not a bank, and they're not a big automotive developer. We're not here to bail people out for bad business decisions. Morissettes have also requested an exception to section 5-103 of the county subdivision ordinance. This section deals with lot arrangement, design, and shape. In this section, it states, quote, "Lots shall not contain peculiarly shaped elongations solely to provide necessary square footage or frontage which would be unsuitable for normal purposes." It also states, "The lot arrangement, design, and shape shall be such that lots will provide satisfactory and desirable sites for buildings. Anytime you are dealing with irregularly shaped lots, multiple concerns should be taken into consideration." The biggest one is whom is requesting this, and what are the future plans for these lots? In this case, these lots that the Morissettes would like to have approved for subdivision, or lots that the Morissettes would like to have approved for subdivision development, sell them to Rock River Homes, which in turn will be sold to future citizens. With this being the case, we need to consider all of these issues that come with irregularly shaped lots. Perfect example of this, my house and the house that's next to mine, both Rock River Homes, both subdivided. Neither one of them were built with garages, it's just a freestanding home. If you want to build a garage to it, which is something that's common, what about an enclosed shed? What about a lean-to? We're on five acres, somebody wants a coop, somebody wants a small barn. All common things that come with this area and this type of land. Well, if you look right now at the actual thing they just submitted on lot one, the one that's labeled in pink. Tell me right there, if I just build a regular home, probably back here in the, you know, section next to Mr. Robert Lee Dagners area, how many issues do you think I'm going to have if I want to build a garage? Or if I want to build a shed, if I want to build a barn? Those are the issues that come with this. Now we'll get to the laws, I apologize, I got a little ahead of myself. If you review the paperwork that I just handed you, or earlier, you will see tax map 30, sorry, I, this one, my apologies. There we go. I also have bigger copies with the parcels of land on them, if there's people that still need one. Those are just individual. And those has actual whole thing with the parcel. Yes, ma'am, they're all the same. Uh, that's just, one is just a version of me printing off the paper top of it, and the other one's the full version with the plat of everything that was officially filed with the courthouse when this was done. So what you're looking at right now is a plat that was filed in 2016, where parcel, tax map 3347 was taken and divided into 3347A, B, C, D, E, and F. F should sound familiar, because F's on right now the map of their requesting, as well as 3347. I'm not going to get into why Mr. Morissette's attorney probably didn't want to address these two lots of myself and my neighbors, because they are also involved in this 2016 plat, which is still right now an unresolved illegally vacated, or excuse me, illegally subdivided, non-vacated plat of land. That includes F, which right here you're being requested an exception for. So I'll point this to you, not only is our property still standing and sitting there illegally and not properly subdivided, but one of these lots that they're requesting on here is also a part of that subdivision. Now, in 2022, there was another plat that was made that involves 3347F. If y'all have any questions, please feel free to ask me at the end, I know it's a lot. But 3347F in 2022, another plat was submitted without going to the agent as required by law. Same thing done with the 2016. Neither one of these subdivided, went and submitted to the county, clerk approves it. It's not the way it's supposed to be done by law. Same thing happened again in 2022. But 2022, 3347F was taken and requested to be separated into a parcel G and then three other lots. So basically four and another parcel. That one was also a part of the lawsuit, but that plat has been vacated fully. So now that plat has just gone back to the original 2016 version of it. So if the 2016 plat is illegal, it was illegally subdivided, and 3347F is a part of that plat, then how can 3347F right now be a legal plat of land? How can that be a tax map? Especially when this is the same plat of land that is required by court order with a judge's signature in this county to be vacated. And I can tell you right now, it hasn't been vacated, because my land, I still right now don't know for certain if it's, I know it's not legal. I actually have questions whether or not I actually own it, even though I've got all sorts of paperwork and pay taxes on it every year. This stuff is that messed up. So let's think about this, this is just two lots, folks, two. All right, and another thing too, if you look at, uh, that paperwork there that I just handed you, and you look at the certificate of confirmation, if you look at the top where it says. Yes, sir. So if you look at the top where it says the name of the landowner, and you look at the bottom of it, where it shows the owner and the sign that, you'll realize those are two different people. Not only did that happen in 2016, it also happened again in 2022. And not only did in 2022, do we have signatures of non-landowners on there, but if you also look at this 2022 plat, where they went to subdivide 3347F, they submitted it as 3347E. It's my wife and I's land. But yet they signed on a court document that they submitted that in 2022, Ms. Morissette was the sole owner of my wife and I's land, but we bought it in 2018. Look at the issues we've got right now with just two, two lots. Imagine what's going to happen with 2020, 22 more. If you can't handle subdividing this, imagine, and that's just the issues that you're going to have with just the citizens, the boards, and the county, going back to the court fees and all that. We're not even going to get into what putting 22 lots on Lee Lake would do environmentally. There was more, but I think I've spoke my mind, so. Yes, sir, questions? Y'all have a good one.
Mr. Oliver, um, did you have the signing sheets or maybe?
No, I didn't have signing sheets.
Okay, thank you.
Apologize, I didn't sign up. I'm Kristen Askey. I'm one of the Rock River homeowners that's in conjunction with Mr. Oliver's. I just wanted to ask, if we're asking for exceptions for this, why are we not asking for an exception for something that should have been fixed long ago? As you've already heard all the other examples. I'm making it real short and sweet. I don't understand again why we're here to make this exemption if something previously has not been even addressed. Short and sweet. Please take this into consideration.
Do you have anything more to add, ma'am?
Kristen Askey, A.S.K.E.Y.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sherman Dagnall. I'm a longtime resident of Nottaway County. My family's been here for generations. I owned a lot next to the fishing road and never met Mr. Morissette in all the years that he's been there. His property line is encroaching upon mine driveway and just bringing a subdivision back there would change my life dramatically. You have cars going in and out. You're talking twenty-two families going right by my, by my house, by my bedroom. And I would have felt better if he would have actually came and been a neighbor. If you're a neighbor, you're trying to subdivide and actually talk to somebody, if you need an exception, you come to your neighbors first, then you go through this. And it's just, it's gonna change things for everyone in, in the community. Your property taxes going up and it's just gonna be all kinds of stuff. You're, we're in the country, we're in a rural place for a reason, and I love the country. You're not gonna be able to go fishing like you used to do or anything. Yeah, excuse me, I'm not a public speaker, but so I'm cracking up a little bit, but the county should look out for us and these exceptions are no good. And that's all I got to say.
How y'all doing? My name's Jerry Bryant and uh I'm up here tonight just to see what's going on with all this stuff I've been reading about in the local papers. And I don't live in that area. I'm a lifetime resident of Nottaway County. But uh it seems to me that what I've gathered here tonight and reading in the paper that it's a, a simple, a simple thing of this gentleman owns a land, wants to subdivide it. He didn't do his homework before he bought it. And it sounds like he essentially bought a pig and a poke and now is trying to figure out how to, what to do with the poke. And uh I don't know if there's any kind of solution that's gonna be good to everybody. But it looks like y'all got a heck of a job running over there, but I just wanna put my little two cents worth as a concerned citizen. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Mr. supervisor, if I could just address some of these comments because I understand the nature of them. I'm not sure if I have time to do that, but if you'll allow me, I'll try to do it quickly. Okay, uh with respect to the first gentleman that spoke, we agree, we're not asking you not to be a steward of Lee Lake. He asked how many lots were on the other side. I count twenty-two. You know, what we're looking for is about the same thing. So that, that's not a great leap. Uh with respect to Mr. Oliver and Ms. Askey, I totally get their anger. Because what we're here and the reason why we're asking for this exception, as you all know, if you've been around here for a while, this has been in litigation for years. The reason why Mr. Morissette hasn't done anything with his property more than he has is that he's been in fight with this county for years and years and years over whether or not he can do it or whether he can't do it. So Mr. Oliver comes up and says he's in violation of the law. We've always maintained that we're not in violation of the law and that's in court. And unfortunately, Mr. Oliver and Ms. Askey got dragged into that and it's still ongoing. But we're here because we're trying to take a different approach. We're trying to avoid ongoing and extensive litigation over land that is basically per your own comprehensive plan, something that is a good thing for the county, for the county. Uh for these residents because they have a history with Morissette, Mr. Morissette now, but for the county, it's the right thing to do. So something else that Mr. Oliver said, which I think is important, which is says that we're in violation of your ordinances, we're also in violation of the state ordinances. There's a huge difference between the state ordinance and Nottaway County's ordinance. The state ordinance basically says that anything that's five acres or less is not even subject to a subdivision rule. It's not. So your ordinance basically says any lot that cuts, any subdivision that cuts land into three or more lots, regardless of the size, is a subdivision. So if you cut a one acre lot into three, one-third acre lots, that's a subdivision. That's not the state rule. The state rule is if it's five acres, we're not even before you. So that's been the, that's been the sticky point all along for years and years and years. Is this a subdivision that we have to, to follow through your ordinances or do we not? We are trying to bring it in to that with a peaceful resolution that ends the litigation. They gets twenty-two lots on a lake that we're willing to carve out anything that's necessary, whether it's to satisfy the first gentleman because he has an access issue, I wasn't aware of that, uh to satisfy the last gentleman because the road would go by his house. There are buffers that are available that we could try to address that. I mean, there's numerous ways that we could do this. And again, we say regardless of the history with Mr. Morissette and these individual defendants, or not defendants, but these individual homeowners. I mean, there is a way to get this done that's in the best interest of the county. We don't have any other choice other than this exception unless we want to go to litigation. And that's why we're here. We're trying to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, once again, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Supervisors, any comments, questions, recommendations?
Can I make a comment, please?
Public hearing is closed, I'll let you decide.
Okay, number one, we're gonna talk about stewardship again. I know you don't want to hear that. I know a lot of people don't want to hear that, but you have the stewardship of Lee Lake. It's your responsibility, um, excuse me, it should be your responsibility to make sure that there's nothing happening to that lake. And what the gentleman before, after me just said was it hasn't been researched. You have no topographical maps, you have no suggested system, you have ten lots on a lake and where are you gonna put the poop? In the lake? End of conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna remove myself from this as I connect to it. I just wanted to listen to the public hearing part, but I will sit at all these for the rest of.
Supervisors, do you have any questions, comments, recommendations?
Yeah, I just wanna know, you say they gotta be, all gotta be at, at least five acres, right? Mark and Dave, I just that, the acres itself, and you have more room, you just have less buildings, just. You had more room to do what you gotta do, really, that's no making of that. If you have a problem with that many, said I said, they gonna build houses on it. If you just add, like I say, another acre and half, or another half acre, that would cut out some of the houses, but you still have enough. That's all I'm saying. Make sense to me?
Supervisors, this?
Uh, chairman, I have a question for Mr. Jody. I've heard from a couple of the independent property owners in the area, have you received anything else, any other feedback?
Um, going, uh, Mr. Dagnall stopped by my office last week and I spoke with Mr. Oliver several times and Ms. Askey as well. Yes, and then, yeah, Mrs. Trish Bauer who lives in the, sort of in the middle of the fourteen acres.
Could I, well, I believe the county department knows that, right?
That's correct.
Were they notified? Were they notified, yes?
Yes, no, uh, they were notified and they, I've not heard any feedback from them. And that's why in my package, I did include some of the setbacks from a random site because we used that when we were looking at this comprehensive plan a while back.
Is there any other private roads in Nottaway County service of subdivisions?
Well, I, if I may, um, if you'll indulge me, I happen to live in Cole Harbor subdivision off of Virginia Lee Boulevard. And I believe it's plotted in the mid-eighties. Um, at that time, the developer, Mr. Cole, um, had, there's arrangement where each of the homeowners at that time, the future homeowners would all contribute a fair amount of money to help maintain the roads. At that time, I do not believe there were public road requirements for the county as there is now. Now, where I live, um, it's, I tried to take pictures of, but it just looks, I did take pictures and it's just kind of if you already look at it, but I can speak from experience of over two years, Mr. Williamson. Since that property, uh, since Mr. Paul, uh, Mr. Cole had, I guess, sold the property or the development or what have you. Um, it was bought up by Mr. Rapp. Now, that's been, I think, almost forty years or so. And there's two segments, the entryway, uh, right past Cole Harbor sub, uh, apartments. And it's Virginia Lee Boulevard from that point on, then there's maybe a hundred-foot section that's paved. Otherwise, it's like the carst in southwest Virginia. It's just bump after bump after bump, uh, well, no, pothole after pothole after pothole. And I can attest, just from my personal experience, there's a reason why we have a public road requirement in this county. And that's, that's all I'd like to say, but I just, I wanted to share that. That's my knowledge, sir, at this time.
All right, question. What's gonna happen if this thing was approved and then the health department comes in there and land doesn't work? Where you can't dig a well, you can't find water. What's gonna happen then? I'm very concerned about that and, and as well as Lee Lake.
And as you, as you may know, Supervisor Ingram, um, we do not allow, uh, in the zoning ordinance, public facilities to be extended in the agricultural zoning district. So I, in my opinion, those would be what's called as trash lots. You know, they, they wouldn't be lots because you couldn't put a home on there. Did I answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The public hearing is over with, uh, the supervisors and the, as a law.
All right, um, so it was bought up several times, our comprehensive plan was kind of bought up several times on how this promotes growth in the county. And while that is true, a little bit more in-depth reading of that, of the comprehensive plan will show that we do want to promote growth, but we are trying to target that growth as focused and balanced as possible. I believe this is several miles out into the rural community. And it is in there several times that we will do our best to preserve the rights of the rural characteristic of Nottaway County. So the comprehensive plan thing, yes, I, I can see that interpretation, but I don't think it fits the overall nature of, of what was actually written there in the plan. When it comes to the road, the reason those state road requirements are there, not so that we're trying to do overkill and make a whole, a really nice road for, for everybody who wants to live there, is to help our emergency service providers do, have to show up there on the worst day possible. The last thing we want is a little teen road, the fire trucks going one way, and all that residents trying to come out. That creates an unsafe area for absolute everyone. So I can't, and personally can't, can't allow that roads, that to be broken. And the last is it was brought up in reference of the lots on the other side of Lee Lake. And while that's true, those were done under the actual rules that are written there. They get, it was kind of bent and manipulated and I think the way that they broken those up into that chicken form, that doesn't really stick to the overall intention of what Nottaway's trying to do. It was done by a rock. And so it's not really a subdivision where we have anything to say. My overall feeling is that there's just too many, too many issues stacked up against this that we could allow to go forward with representation.
So, oh, wait. Yo, with regards to the irregularly shaped lots, I would punch all's attention to page nine, five dash one oh three. And I believe Mr. Oliver already spoke to this, but lot arrangement, design, and shape, the lot arrangement, design, and shape shall be such that lots will provide satisfactory and desirable sites for buildings, be properly related to the topography and conform to requirements set forth herein. Lots shall not contain pure peculiarly shaped elongations solely to provide necessary square footage or frontage which would be unsuitable for normal purpose. Now, moving on to the zoning ordinance, division three, interpretation of the zoning ordinance and map, section one point three dash five, methods of measuring lots, yards, and related terms, page ten. Sec, uh, subsection two, regular lots, determination of front yard, uh, subsection on that is number two. On regular lots, regular or corner lots, the front shall be construed to be the shortest boundary fronting on the street. If a lot has equal fringe on two or more streets, the front lot shall be determined and shown on the subdivision plat or side plan by prevailing building pattern or the prevalent lot pattern if the building pattern has not been established. I included that in there because there's at least one lot in this subdivision that was, was qualified. Secondly, under the same subsection, uh, on page eleven, irregular lots, yard requirements, number four. All yards shall be at least the same separation from all lot lines as required for minimum side yards in the district and for the lot line which is determined to be the front lot line setback and yard requirements for a front yard shall be met. Additionally, if any, if an irregular lot butts a street at any time, the distant, a distance shall be provided that equals the yard required on a regular lot adjacent to the, uh, street in the district. So I would take it that, um, to me, well, let me get to this, my conclusion. Um, the minimum lot width, uh, from the center, from the front lot line, this is on page twelve, section two dash one dash five. Again, this is from the A-one, uh, zoning district, uh, lot requirements and development density. Number four, the minimum lot width from the front lot line to rear lot line is two hundred feet. So it has to be two hundred feet at a minimum at the street frontage and then fronting what we'd call the rear lot which faces Lee Lake. That is not correct. That is not happening on the plat that was submitted to me. For the citations regarding irregular lots, they're wrong. They shouldn't be that way. So I wanted to add that piece. And for the streets, I think they spit, the ordinance, well, the ordinance does mention, um, maintaining, well, having public streets. And let me find that. And I'll just speak to the zoning part because, uh, five dash one one two of the subdivision ordinance clearly speaks to the, um, requirement for public streets, public roads. From the zoning ordinance, article two, uh, all structures required a building permit shall be erected on lots of chat frontage on a public road or access to a public road by a private road or access easement if provided for herein or as subdivision ordinance so as to provide safe and convenient access for servicing and required off-street parking. Now, having said that, I've not received construction plans for either a private road nor a public road, which is required. That is on the final plat checklist. So it's deficient if anything, it's, I will just go back to the fact that the ordinance. that the ordinance states first and foremost, the roads shall be public. So thank you for indulging me. I was getting a little antsy, so I had to...
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
You're welcome.
Any, any more questions? Do we have any recommendations tonight by Board Supervisors? We've moved as rapid as second that we will deny this request to the Board of Supervisors. All in favor, let's raise our right hand.
Yeah, I was gonna get to...
I want to be clear, the exception request is made to the planning commission. So you all are making the decision, not a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. I just wanted that to be clear for purposes of your motion and whatever action you're considering.
Yes, and I, I do want to make sure that we identify, according to your agenda in front of you, that we specify the exceptions that you are recommending against. If we could clarify that motion, that would be good.
So originally, I was looking at denying a second to regarding the road, but after you, after you spoke for a while, they, you know, have now all four.
Probably within seconds, and we will deny all three of the requests. All in favor, let's raise our right hand. Oppose.